We're gonna start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have a moment of silence, please. Roll call for Councilor Chamberlain.
Here.
Councilor Heisen.
Here.
Councilor Schneider.
Here.
Councilor Stickley.
Here.
Councilor Tiarina.
Here.
Council President Steerks.
Here.
We have six members present in the other room. Thank you. Before I ask council to approve the minutes, I would like to go to... One of the minutes here. State of the Clemenson-Nelson. I think there was just a typo on that. I gotta find it now. I have it written, but I don't have it on. When we discuss the changeover of the Clemenson-Nelson... Council or committee in the whole? That might have been through the parks. So, I just think it needs to be noted when Parks gets wrapped at that... Okay, Scott's got the minutes too, so... Right. Okay. So, council has had time to review the prior meeting's minutes. Get a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
One second. Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Councilor Stickley and seconded by Councilor Heisen. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We need a motion to acknowledge that council has received the financial reports for the month of October 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to acknowledge that council has received the financial reports for the month of October 2023, moved by Councilor Tiarina, and seconded by Council President Steerks. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to individuals wishing to address council. Thank you all for coming to our council meeting. We do have six people on the agenda. And with those six people, we are going to start with Tim Call. Now, the one thing is to speak up as loud as you can because that mic does not work up there.
It's not here.
Yes, not even there. And also for council, I've been asked to speak a little bit louder so that the people in the back can hear as well. Okay, Tim?
Okay. I'm here to talk about the lot at the corner of Shoup and Elm Street. My name's Tim Call. My wife and son have lived at 325 Beach Street, which is a corner of Beach and Marshall for more than 25 years, probably closer to 30. I received a letter from the city advising the proposed rezoning to the property at the end of the street. My neighbor approached me several times with concerns about the rezoning and the property use, the proposed property use. I was surprised it needed rezoned, as I thought the school was before to begin with, even though Leggett Street's before I see that the high school's residential, so apparently both would apply. I am not opposed to rezoning or the proposed use for the lot. Leggett Street School opened in 1999, so the lot's been vacant for more than 20 years. In those 20 years, no one has viewed that lot as a perfect place to build their new house. Why would you since it's next to the railroad tracks? So, for 20 years, it's been the vacant lot. Lost my place here. The first to show interest in it, which is, in my opinion, a low-impact doctor's office, was what's proposed to be there. It's not what I would see as my ideal business, which if I had a choice, it'd be a steakhouse. But that's not acceptable, but that's probably not an acceptable use of the space either. I've heard of what the others in the neighborhood have said about it and what they'd like it to be. In all probability, there's probably not gonna be a new house built there in the next 20 years because, again, it's not the ideal place to do that. So, Shoup Avenue has... It's peppered with businesses and homes, so why can't we put a business there also? There are less desirable uses for that space, and in 20 years, the vacant lot has not been bringing revenue to the city Shelby. I'm in favor of whatever rezoning requires to build a building there. I'm not opposed to that. It's been vacant for 20 years. I mean, I enjoy the open space. I liked the lot, but it's not bringing revenue to the city. So, I hope that you, as council, will consider the uses for that property and understand that, again, I don't think, as residential, it's ever gonna be used. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you make the decision that's best for Waseon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, we have Doug Roloff.
Hi. And thanks for allowing me the opportunity to talk with you all, and thank you guys all for coming and support. One thing that's been really troubling me through the past two meetings is... Let me think back to my English class. In order to have a total picture of a story, you need to know the who, the what, the where, the when, and the why. We know the who, we know the what, we know the where, we know the when. But I've never heard anybody from council say why that is a good fit for Waseon. I did hear one member say that it made them sad when they drove by and saw a grassy field, grass growing in it. And I did hear another member say that they had a bad back and possibly they might wanna go to a chiropractor. But I don't think any of that is a concern to anybody in this room. But, you know, maybe I don't have my facts right. Maybe I was only half-listening, and that's exactly how I felt after our first meeting, is that some of you in here were only half-listening to what we were saying. I felt that your minds were made up before we walked in this room. That was my side tangent. This is what I actually wrote. I'm not here tonight to talk about the appearance of a building or whether or not the prospective buyer is a good person or not. That's all irrelevant. This is about rezoning and changing the dynamics of our neighborhood. Most days on our street, on Elm Street, you'll find myself or my neighbors sitting on the front porch, talking with other people that are passing by. And yes, we enjoyed that view. And it doesn't matter if it was a brand-new house, because I heard some people say we wouldn't like them if they were brand-new houses either, because they're not Victorian. A brand-new house doesn't just... Doesn't take away from my house. No homeowner buys in a neighborhood and hopes that someone will strip their property of value or detract from the beauty of their home. With all the available commercial offerings and vacant storefronts that we have available in our city, I find it confusing that some of you think that it's in the voters' best interest to destroy our entire neighborhood and divide our entire community. This property has a special meaning for many people who attended school here, yet very few residents were even made aware of what you're trying to do, at least not until now. All of us in this room, we vote, we pay taxes, worship, work, or shop in our community. Imagine how different things could be if each one of us spoke to just 10 other residents about how poorly we're being represented by some of the members of this council. As a council member, you should understand that we didn't vote you into this office so that you could think for us. We voted you... Voted for you in hopes that you would listen to us and decide things with our best interests in mind, not your own personal thoughts. I can only pray that some of you realize this as you were sneaking down the back steps after the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Next, we have Todd Bloss.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to express my concerns with this rezoning proposal. First of all, I am not against Rebel Chiropractic coming to Waseon. I do feel that the location they have chosen is wrong. Why did they not choose to build on available land on Shoup Avenue? They have previously stated that the old Elm Street School property is more area than they needed. One of the reasons they claim is the location so that people can walk to their business. But the other property in Napoleon that they would go to if this proposal is voted down is located out by the schools. It isn't located close to downtown. It isn't in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and it definitely isn't within walking distance for the community. The reason that they want the Elm Street School property is obvious. The land will be much cheaper to purchase than out on Shoup Avenue. They also want to build the cheapest building possible instead of a brick-and-mortar building that would look much better and possibly blend into our neighborhood. This leads me to believe that they are trying to take the cheapest route possible to get their business up and running. And yet, we are to believe that they will be spending the money to build a dog park and a pickleball court and maintain it once it's built? This is just fluff to get you to approve the rezoning. They are a business first and foremost. They are in it to make money. Dog parks and pickleball courts cost a lot of money to build and maintain. They have made no guarantees that they will ever build them. It's just future plans. I do not believe they will follow through with that. My concern is that they will come to this council in a few years and say, "We've changed our plans and would like to sell the land to another business that wants to build there." And then, depending on how much land is left over, maybe another one, like a Walgreens on the corner. Then, the whole area will be full of commercial businesses, and Rubble will get back most, if not all, the money they invested into the property and their building. Meanwhile, those of us living across from and near the area will be forced to deal with the buildings, the traffic, the light pollution from the lights reflecting off the ground and off the buildings, and the loss of value to our homes. Don't kid yourselves and say, "Well, that'll never happen." Ask yourselves, what makes more business sense? I'm not a businessman, but even I know what makes more business sense. I have a copy here also of the application for amending zone classifications. The application was by the Jiree Group LLC. The signature on the application was by Tyler Swans, one of the chiropractors. In the Waseon City Charter, Section 4.11A, it states, "Ordinances or resolutions establishing, amending, revising, changing, or repealing zoning classifications, district's uses, or regulations shall be initiated in one of the following ways: By adoption of a motion by the planning commission; By an adoption of an ordinance or resolution by council; By the filing of an application by the owner; Or, in the event of multiple parcels, by the majority of owners of property within the area proposed to be changed or affected by such amendment." Mr. Swans is not the owner of the property. Key Mansfield is the current owner and should have been the person to legally sign the application. This application, according to city charter, is not valid. Some of you on council are running for reelection or trying to further your political career. Take a good look at the people in attendance here tonight who are opposed to this rezoning proposal. Do not forget that you work for us. Your job is to listen to the people who elected you to the position you currently hold and vote for what the people want, not for what you want or think is best for us. We are watching how you vote on this proposal, and if you vote to approve this rezoning, we will not forget that on November 7th. We will also let other voters know how you ignore the will of the people. The majority of this community does not want our residential areas rezoned into commercial properties... Or, I'm sorry, commercial areas. We have plenty of commercial areas in Waseon for businesses to locate to. In closing, I hope that you, the members of council, who previously voted for this proposal, will listen to the citizens of this town and see the issues and problems that rezoning this residential property will cause. It is not a good idea. It is not good for the city. We, the voters, the very people who elected you to represent us, are telling you to vote no on this proposal. Are you going to listen to us and do what we ask? Or are you going to do what you want and/or what you think we want? Thank you for letting me take the time... Or, thank you for taking the time to listen and consider to what I have said.
Thank you, Todd. Okay. Next, we have Kevin Heit.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me, council members and mayor, to be here. I agree with a lot of things that Todd said. First of all, from a legal standpoint, I think we're setting a terrible precedent here by allowing zoning to rezone. Now, I sold real estate many years ago here in Ohio. I've owned businesses outside of the state. I was an executive director in a publicly traded company. So, I've had to go to board of directors and things of that nature. But in real estate, I even called another Realtor here locally, and I said, "Do you ever recall rezoning something where you represented the buyer?" And he said, "No, that's not legally... That's not how it should... The seller should be the one that you represent." This is a contingency clause. This is contingent upon the change of zoning. That's why they want to have this change. Where is the seller? I don't... Is the seller here? Seller's not here? Okay. So, he's not here, first of all. So, I think that that is just setting a very bad precedent. Secondly, I also agree with Todd that you, as councils as a whole, need to represent the people of Waseon. I've talked to one of the council members, and he said to me, "Well, there are also another 7,000-some-odd people here that I have to represent." However, I don't see many of them here in this room tonight. None of them whatsoever. The other thing is, too... Todd, I agree with Todd again. What happens once this is rezoned? I don't see it from a business standpoint of them creating enough revenue from two chiropractors to have a pickleball court thrown in there, the maintenance of it, a fence of it. I mean, we're talking about putting up a fence around the pickleball courts at Homecoming Park tonight. Half of the Rotary's going to pay. The city is, you know, expected to pay the other half. That's very generous of the Rotary. But here, what's going to happen in a year or two down the road when, you know what? Wow, we're not generating enough revenue. I say to Rebel Chiropractic, "Why haven't you talked to a guy like Mike Murray, who's out on Shoup Avenue? They have seven acres there. $300,000. You could parcel it off. That's going to give you even more room. It's zoned correctly, and there's nothing. It's going to fit into that area." Here, once again, we're setting a terrible precedent to just deteriorate the neighborhoods that we have. Yes, it's been sitting for 13 years empty. However, on the other hand, it's... I mean, don't get married after the first date. I really believe that we need to look into this a little more further because I don't think that Rebel... I think that they have in their best interest. I'm not trying to put them down and feel as though that we're trying to pull business away from Waseon and not have it come in here. However, at the end of the day, I don't see the business end of it working. What happens two years from now? Well, they could... They probably are filing under a different LLC or something. They could... They could, I mean, bankrupt that. They have an empty building there. Now, what are we gonna do with it? So, those are my concerns. But I truly feel as though that you, as representatives of the city, yes, you need to do what is in the best interest of the city. I've never seen this many people show up to really just say, "Hey, I'm against this." This is the beautiful thing about America. We have the ability to go and to lobby to our congressmen, to write them, our senators, and we expect certain results from them. Do we always get it? No. But at least we have that. This is a forum here that is absolutely amazing. You have to face your constituents here, at the grocery store, in the schools, wherever it may be, at sporting events. And I am saying, this is just a terrible idea for you to approve this zoning tonight. And I just ask that you all, the four of you that voted for it, I ask that you change your mind tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Next, we have Joanne Haber.
I have some handouts for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have an extra copy that you want. Pass it around. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today regarding the proposed zoning change at East Elm Street and North Shoup Avenue. My name is Joanne Haber. Probably not a familiar name or face to some of you. I generally don't get involved much in civic matters, but instead trust others for that and always have always been pretty quiet by nature, until now. This zoning change issue has affected me too close to home, literally, to keep silent. I have been a resident of Waseon since 1973, so for the last 50 years, I've called this city my home and have resided at my current residence at 235 East Elm Street for the past 44 years. In addition to our residents, my husband and I own three investment rental homes, all within three blocks of the Elm Street empty lot. So, my interest in this issue became even greater. The city of Waseon is truly a great place to live, and the Elm Street area surrounding my home has always been a great neighborhood and is some of the oldest homes in town. People take pride in their homes, and it shows when you drive down our street. There's very little housing turnover on Elm Street. When people move into that part of town, they seem to stay for years and years because, like myself, they love the area. And we even love the trains. So, it becomes easy to understand why this proposed zoning change on the corner of North Shoup and East Elm has become such a hot topic in Waseon and beyond. But I'm not here to say the proposed chiropractor office building slash coffee shop shouldn't be there because it will look ugly and out of place. I'm also not here to say it should be a park, a community garden, a center for kids, or even a splash pad. You can read all those types of comments yourself and many more in my Facebook group printout at the back of your packet. But instead, we are asking that our concerns be heard and to be told the truth. When I was first shown the building design that was presented at the council meeting on September 18th for the proposed chiropractor office building slash coffee shop, my first reaction was a resounding no. Thereafter, I'll refer to that design as building... As design number one. My questions were, "Why that location? Why that type of building?" So, I decided to create a post in the Facebook group I'm in to get some local feedback where people could freely voice their opinions on the project or specifically on the design of the building and just create a good place for open discussion. It appears from my Facebook survey unofficial tally that this type of building on that lot overwhelmingly failed to get support, mostly because of the style of the building. 88% of those responding to my post expressed disapproval. Understandably, the 60 or so people that commented on the post, specifically about the building style and planned location, isn't a big sampling. But that brings up this question. How many council members have each gone out and talked to at least 60 people or created their own unofficial survey, like I did? Or held neighborhood meetings to talk to people and brainstorm with them, to listen to them, to get their thoughts on what could be the right fit to occupy that empty lot? A project such as this needs citizen input. I stress that none of us are opposed to growth or new business coming into town, but I can say with absolute certainty that the majority of Waseon citizens feel that city leaders are not listening to their concerns. Instead, it appears that the zoning change is quickly being forced upon them without regard to citizen input. Seems to many of us that city council has not done their own research and due diligence. The attitude seems to be, "That lot has been sitting empty for years. Let's just move on it quickly and not turn away new business before that new business decides to go to a neighboring town." I fully believe this is not in the best entrance... Interest of we, the people, for the city leaders to take this approach. I was informed by one of my neighbors there would be more discussion and a zoning vote at the next city council meeting to be held on October 2nd. "You should go," she said. So, I did. And here I was, sitting at my first-ever live and in-person Waseon City Council meeting. That afternoon, we were shown on the overhead screen a different... A different proposed chiropractor office design, which I'll call design number two. Now, I was confused because it was a totally different building design than design number one that was passed out at the September 18th council meeting and later shared with me. But yet, I didn't hear much discussion in the room from council about the changed design. I thought, "Why wasn't that questioned? Wasn't that the job of the council and mayor to notice design number two didn't look like design number one? Call attention to it and question it? Had the design change gone through all the proper channels for approval?" I left the council meeting feeling frustrated and with more questions. Granted, design number two was somewhat better than design number one, but it still didn't work in my mind for this area. I kept thinking, "I must have missed something because this just doesn't make sense." What is going on behind the scenes that hasn't been shared? I quickly began to lose trust in council and in the process. I became even more curious about design number two and needed to figure it out for myself. How design number two came about? I took to social media on Facebook, hoping to find some conversation about it. I went to Council Chamberlain's personal page, which is open to the public, and discovered a post with a comment that got my attention. Copy of this post... Copy of this portion of the post is in that packet. A sister to Andy Walsh, the project architect, commented on Shane's post on October 3rd at 5:45 PM, one day after the last council meeting. She stated that her brother Andy told her that drawing was not from his office but what the owners liked as an inspiration. Thank you. And it's actually a house. I thought, "What does this even mean? Design number two had the architect's logo on it, but they hadn't created it? That just didn't seem right or ethical to me. And it was designed for a house, not even for an office building like we were told." Consular Chamberlain obviously knew about this inspiration design. It was a comment on his post, and he read it. Now, the question is, was the rest of the city council and the mayor informed of what he had just been told by the project architect's sister? Or was that an important piece of information not disclosed by Consular Chamberlain? It's a reasonable assumption to say that those of us that were in attendance at the meeting on October 2nd believed design number two was now the design for the proposed chiropractor office building. Why wouldn't we think that? But in fact, it was merely an inspiration, a vision, if you will, and not even an office. Shane, this information... This info was on your personal Facebook page after you read Rebecca's comment that it wasn't the project architect's own design, but yet carried his logo on it, and it wasn't even an office, but instead a house. Didn't you feel it was your duty to share this information with the mayor and the rest of council? Or did you knowingly withhold that information from them? So, we were shown design number one from the September 18th council meeting and design number two from the October 2nd meeting. I discovered through my own research that design number one also couldn't have been created by these project architects because design number one... This one? Is actually a house located in Essex, England that was converted in 2017 from a dilapidated World War I soldier barracks. I found numerous pictures and articles on the internet referring to this home, commonly known online as the Zink House. References to those articles can also be found in the packet. The Zink House is not just a likeness or a building similar to our design number one, but it is the exact rendition of it, right down to the lounge chairs, patio set, and potted plants in front of the door. And yet, the project architect on the Waseon project has their business logo on design number one, a design copied from the internet. How is the project architect able to do this? It appears we, as a community, have been deceived and misled. Why should we trust you now after this shady discovery? If there is a reasonable explanation for what I found and circumstances are not as they appear, I'd love to hear about it. The proof showing everything I've stated here is all printed out in your handout. Shame on the four of you for voting yes to get this zoning change pushed through without doing research. Shame on the four of you for voting yes to get this zoning change pushed through without doing research. You have something explaining to do to the people of Waseon. And in closing, after hearing the concerns from myself as well as the other speakers, if the four of you can vote yes again today to change the zoning so this scam of a project can proceed, then you don't deserve the privilege of sitting in those Consular chairs and pretend to care about us. The citizens of Waseon have been misled and deceived by the majority of council and deserve a public apology. We want truth and transparency, not half-truths, lies, and deception. We can no longer trust you. There are better choices of candidates to vote for on election day. Waseon deserves better. Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Kevin Nelson.
Mayor and city council, I would like to express my gratitude for allowing me time to speak this evening. I am here tonight as a concerned Waseon taxpayer to voice our concerns and the uncertainties about the rezoning and approval of this proposed project. Most of you know my name's Kevin Nelson. My wife Debbie and I are forty-year residents of Waseon, having relocated from Toledo in nineteen eighty-three. We moved to Waseon so that our two children could take advantage of the excellent school system and enjoy the amenities of a small-town atmosphere. We purchased our home in nineteen eighty-nine, and we are only the third family to live in this home in a hundred and twenty-three years. Have invested thousands of dollars to maintain the integrity of our home as many of our neighbors. I have been a member of the Waseon Fire Department for thirty-nine years, and I think I'm the old guy on the department. And also a member of the Waseon Pride Preservation Committee for over twenty years. I am currently a Waseon business owner, have owned my own design project management services company for thirty-nine, thirty-five years, have worked for numerous architects and engineers in Toledo throughout my career. I have designed numerous commercial buildings in Waseon, such as Sullivan's Restaurant, Dr. Ladd's Magic Shop, Salon Serenity, AKA Designs, Edward Jones, and the Clinton Township Office and Maintenance Building. I can say for certain that I am proud of each and every design that I have accomplished throughout Waseon, and these projects will be my lasting legacy. A few city council members recently commented that they wouldn't mind having this building built adjacent to you. But you know what? It's not going to be, and it just makes something sound so easy to say. But it will be across the street from residents that live on Elm Street, and will have to look at this building daily. Mayor and city council, the way I understand your duties are to not only do the business functions of Waseon, but also to represent the taxpayers of Waseon. And you should be open to listening and understanding citizens' ideas, criticisms, and concerns regarding the way Waseon goes about conducting business and how issues could be addressed to find a solution for the citizens and what is appropriate for the city of Waseon. But you know, I really don't see this here. Only interest in the tax revenue and to jump at the chance to sell this vacant property. Mayor and city council, you really haven't gotten the point. We aren't against this new business wanting to build in Waseon, and we only embrace them and want to see Waseon prosper and grow. But what we are against is this style of building being built across the street from hundred-year-old homes. Please explain why someone build, would build a ten-thousand-square-foot building only utilizing thirty percent of the building and have no commitments for the remaining seven-thousand square feet? Is there another motive that we are not being told about? Only hypothetical ideas to what could be located in the rest of the building, but no commitments? What is going to be located in the remaining portion? Local residents have a right to know and are certainly uneasy to what could be in the rest of the building. Way too many red flags flying here, folks. Obviously, the number of tax, Waseon taxpayers that have shown up to voice our displeasure to this building doesn't really matter to you. Does this even weigh on your consciousness at all, or only your self-interest? We are requesting that this property remain residential zone, not be changed to allow a Quonset hut building to be located on this property. A visionary exists only in imagination. Great building design isn't something that happens on a computer screen or behind closed doors. Happens in that corner of the mind where dreams are born and imagination soars. But what I don't see is much vision with this design. John Ruskin, a famous English critic from the early nineteen hundreds, noted for his art, architecture, and who was a gifted painter, once said, and I quote, "When we build, let us think that we build forever. Let us, let it not be for present delight nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for. But let us think as we lay stone on stone that a time is to come when those stones will be held sacred because our hands have touched them. And that men will say as they look upon the labor and wrought substance of them, 'See this our fathers did for us.'" Mayor and city council, do you really want your legacy to be remembered as a town that has a Quonset hut building on the main street of town? And you can probably say, "See this, I was associated with bringing to Waseon." Thank you for your time and hearing our concerns. Do the right thing for the taxpayers of Waseon.
Thank you, Kevin.
So mayor, since we have economic development here, could ED talk on the issue, please?
The economic development? You're asking to open up the floor?
For a government agency to talk about development and city?
Honestly, he's been here at all three meetings, and I understand that he would publicly bring great knowledge. But if you, if council wishes to open up the floor, we open up the floor for everybody to be able to speak and not just one person. So it's up to council, because I, I did not allow them to have, they've had a public hearing. They've had two readings to be able to speak.
I just seen Matt back there.
So it's up to council if they would wish to do that. So you guys can make that decision if you choose to or not.
I'd make a motion to open up the floor. Second, Pat.
Councilor Chamberlain? You need to vote? No, you don't need to vote. Well, just to get the opinion of all the council, are you willing to open up the floor for anyone to speak?
I would, Dave. I think it'd be best if it took a vote. It's fine.
Well, your president's back.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Chirina? Councilor Snoyer?
No.
Council President Sturges? Bagheer's on the motion, Harris.
Okay, when we do this, council has just opened up the floor for people to speak. I'm asking the same consideration that the people that came forward to keep it short, and also ask that we keep decorum in this room without burst or anything else that needs to be said. So if someone would like to speak, the first one that Consular Stickley asked would be for Matt to come forward. I don't even know if you heard that, and I don't think he was prepared for this, but he is the economic director of Fulton County, and he is asking for, to get his opinion.
What do you think, Matt?
I would ask that everybody say who you are, so you, for your name.
Well, good evening. I'm Matt Gilroy. I'm the executive director of the Fulton County Community Improvement Corporation. Our offices are located at the Fulton County Airport north of Waseon. Basically, the only comment that, that I have is Waseon as a community has been very open to business development and growth over the nine years that I have been here, serving Fulton County. And I appreciate that. From what I hear in the audience, the, the audience is also favorable towards seeing growth and seeing a, an enhanced economy. And, you know, a business such as this will, you know, hopefully impact from positive the, the economic condition of the community. And in my viewpoint, that's always a good thing. So council has to take in consideration the, the positive aspects of what a project like this will bring into the Waseon community, as well as the concerns of the audience and, and the taxpaying community. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
One of my biggest concerns of this was the division in the community when something like this does happen. And it's not just Waseon that goes through this. I've mentioned the city of Waterville, which is now in common use court right now because of the division on positive growth that was going forward that would generate a lot of revenue. I've been told back and forth when communities are divided, whether it be a, a school levy or a city levy or business or whatever, that it takes years for the division to come back. That that's something that doesn't heal after the vote or the, the action. Being an economic director, do you see that happening in other communities where it takes years for that to, to heal?
Certainly, the empathy of the project in Waterville has been the division in, in that community. And how long that's going to take to heal, heal, I have no idea. I see this primarily in, in the space that generally economic development works in is to try to bring manufacturing into a community. And, and, and many projects in, in many communities, sometimes, you know, the, the, part of the community wants it, part of the community doesn't. And it does take a toll in, in terms of the emotional impact that it has on a community. But, you know, it's hard for me to say, you know, it's different in, in every community and every neighborhood, you know, regarding how communities and, and people, individuals interact with one another beyond something like this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions?
Any other questions?
Where do you live at, Matt?
I live in Archibald.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I see?
Yeah.
Wouldn't love to hear from the architect.
Andy Welch, project architect. I'm a resident of Delta, offices in Perrysburg. Joanne, you have some facts that are straight, some that aren't. Design one is a house. Not design two, design one, that's a house. We presented that as a concept because the initial submission was just a rezoning change. It's not an architectural presentation.
The one that you, the metal one?
Yes.
That came to planning commission, that's, that's a house.
Yes, that is a house. That, what she said about the house in Essex, that's one-hundred percent correct. That was the design inspiration, that's the concept that we were presenting. So, design number two, that's one-hundred percent this building. That's what our design is. So, just wanted to make sure those facts get straightened out. There is no scam. What's that?
Design number two, you designed?
Yes, that is our design. We have, at design one, we had, we'd just been hired by Rebel. We had very little input at that, at that point in time.
So what's true on Facebook, what's true?
So we're just presenting a concept. What's that?
What's true on Facebook, what's?
Imagine that. Facts aren't always straight. So, at that point in time, we'd just gotten hired. We wanted to present something that, you know, planning commission could look at and say, "Okay, we understand what's going on with the project." Now that we've gotten into the project further, we still haven't gotten too far because we don't want to overstep our boundaries here and take the project too far, so. Yeah, but there's no scam.
Well, the first one I, I thought was a design that came to planning commission, honestly. Till I seen this design here. I did think that. And I, I can't speak for the rest of planning commission, but we just asked if everything was up to specs.
Planning commission asked for elevations of, of the building, and that's it. And to see an elevation of the Quonset hut, that doesn't really present itself very well. So we put in that rendering so the planning commission can have a better understanding of what the project was.
And what was the response of the planning commission to that? To the Quonset hut? I, there was discussion that we weren't real sure, but it was a very small picture. When we got the packet for planning commission, we got to see it that night. We didn't get it ahead of time. I don't know what the reasoning was for that, but it came in and we looked at it, and on the back page was this picture, and it was small. And we questioned it, but of course, planning commission is specs, planning commission is to make sure that everything is right. One of the things that wasn't correct was the application. So when you ask certain people, you know, is everything up to specs? Is, is fire safety, is, you know, the, the application was not. And there's no, no excuse for that being gone forward like that. Other than that, that was the only picture we had. I've never, I can honestly say, sitting on planning and Harold, I don't even know if you were at this meeting or not.
I was.
But.
Sue was, oh, Lyons was also.
I've always, when it comes forward and you have a picture of it, it, I was like, this is a possibility or whatever, that was not stated. We looked at it, we said, you know, and I, we even said, and I'm not going to quote anybody on the planning commission, is, I don't know if that's going to be accepted. But the plans, the, the, how everything came in, the architect plans, everything was correct as to what we asked for.
Who motioned?
That goes.
Who made the motion to bring it to council from planning commission? Who made that motion?
It doesn't, it isn't a motion, that is the charter. We look at the specs and planning commission only for zoning change, that's it. That goes down then to council as it did. When it's a change of use or when it's anything else and, and, you know, not sure about a hill going into someone's, you know, the grass, the, whatever. We make those decisions, and then if people, the hearing stays in the planning commission. The only hearing that doesn't stay in the planning commission is a change of zoning. So we get to see the plans, but we don't get to hear the people.
Okay.
In the, in a change of zoning. Everything else stays in planning commission. And then if they are not happy with the planning condition, uh, planning commission, then that goes to the zoning board of appeal. It never comes to council. And nothing except for the change of the zone comes to council.
So who made the motion?
Yeah, I don't.
The mayor made the motion, and Sue Wine seconded the motion.
To accept the plans.
And we all made them, agreed to make.
So it was unanimous?
Unanimous.
I don't remember making the motion, did I?
Yes, you did.
Okay, well, I'm glad you looked it up, because I really don't.
I didn't look it up, I was there. I didn't have to look it up.
Oh, you remember that? I don't, good for you, I'm just saying, bravo. I don't remember it.
Everybody voted to bring it forward.
To bring it forward, yes, we did.
To let council work on it and decide. So that, that's what the planning commission did. Is that not right, Sue? So there you go.
Mayor motion, Sue seconded, and then everybody said, yes, bring it to council.
Yes. And it's a six-member board.
Six-member board.
Is it six, is it six?
Um, not all six were there. I don't have any of the stuff in it. Was this the one that we couldn't act on because we didn't have enough people and we had to bring it back, or was that with Parkside? I cannot remember, because we have three of them going right now.
That was Parkside, I believe.
That was Parkside. Were you at this one? The only, the only thing is, yes, I did, I did make it go forward. And the reason I made it go forward is it met all the specs that the planning commission to come down to you so that it could be heard. Unfortunately, the planning commission doesn't. Unfortunately, the planning commission does not get to hear the hearing of the people before they make their decision on zoning change, which I think is wrong.
And that's a true statement.
Yes.
Was the neighborhood, is the neighborhood that's affected typically informed of the planning board meeting?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
They were, a few, what goes with the charter, and you can answer that, Keith.
Not until our first public hearing.
The public hearing was the first notification.
Okay.
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta come in and present it first before you can, then you have so much time to be able to let the public know that this is coming forward. And they get their public hearing, just like these guys got their public hearing down here. We didn't get to hear them.
After that.
What did you say, Harold?
I said, that's when it started, after the planning commission.
Yes.
Then it came, and then the public hearing comes, is how...
Only for zoning, only for zoning change. That's the only procedure that does it this way.
And that's how it operates. Exactly. So since you designed this building, my question is, what's your cost factor on the building?
I haven't had that point yet.
You don't have a plan?
There's still waiting on this.
I thought you just said you designed it.
We're designing it, yes.
But you don't have a cost factor?
We're, all we have is a floor plan at this point.
What's that?
All we have is a floor plan at this point. We haven't gotten that far into design.
But you want us to vote on letting it go through without a cost factor?
Well, the zoning change is only zoning. We're not voting on the building, we're voting on zoning.
Yeah, for the building, that's going to be there.
Yeah. That's like...
This is not a bottom-of-the-barrel building, I can tell you that much. I mean...
Well, you got an idea what it was going to cost? You're an architect, right?
I'd say two million bucks off the top of my head.
How much?
Two million.
Two million dollars for the building?
I'm spitballing here.
I have a question.
I just want to let you know, we're not going to hold it against you, you live in Delta.
Yeah.
All right.
Ironically, you know, the image that has neighbors upset is a residence, and that's what's currently zoned, so that house could be built there right now.
Uh-huh.
Interesting.
Thank you, Chief.
Hand up, yes.
Just a quick question.
Yeah. Say your name, please.
My name is Dr. John Schwanz. I'm owner of Rebel Chiropractic, along with Dr. Tyler Schwanz in Waterville, Ohio, and Dr. Allison Galker. Dr. Tyler Schwanz and myself are also owner of the Jira Group, that is seeking to develop the property in the way that we have intended. First of all, it's, this hasn't been a rush project. We are only held by the stipulations of the Realtor. We have a certain window of time to have the property of change, the change of zoning recorded, so that we can either build the building or not, and that determines whether or not we purchase the property. And it's, in our estimation, that nobody has stepped up, listening to the residents in somewheres between 13 and 20 years for the change of property to either purchase it, develop it, or whatnot. And our sole goal coming to Waseon, number one, is to serve the community, just as we have in Waterville for nearly 40 years. I'm the oldest doctor, as I think it was Kevin mentioned, he's the old guy, I'm the old guy in our office. All the other doctors, Dr. Tyler Schwanz included, are my next generation. So we are going to serve a community, and for us, and being in Waterville for nearly 40 years, this is a step up for us, coming to the big town of Waseon. We see that as a county seat, a center of commerce, watched, and we talked with Matt, and he is flat out excited about what's going on in Fulton County as far as all, as far as all the development, not just in Waseon, but in Delta and Archibald and surrounding communities. And we want to be part of that, to bring something to offer to the city of Waseon and the surrounding communities. We already have a patient base from this area, so that we, we know that our, our name is out here. We have been fully transparent for all the facts that we have known along the way, the step-by-step process. You don't build a building before you have the zoning, you don't purchase a property before you have it zoned correctly for that building and so forth. So we've just been trying to take the step, and we had to make the investment as far as a down payment and escrow, and then additional funds towards the property, just to get it this far. So we've got skin in the game. And as far as the 10,000 square foot building that's, one of the individuals spoke about, it's a 6,000 square foot building, the chiropractic office will be half of that. And the other portion, we've already been in talks with several businesses in the community as to the potential of having the space and have had interest expressed. I thank you very much for your time and your consideration in this matter. And as I mentioned, just in closing, our first and final goal is to serve the community in Waseon and, from the chiropractic perspective, and then to work well, play well, be well. That is our mantra for moving into the community. That's why we see the dog park as a facilitating movement. Motion is lotion for the joints, if any of you have seen a practitioner in the field of chiropractic, and also for pickleball. It's the single largest and fastest growing sport in America today for those 16 and over, which I'm part of that population, my wife is. She just started playing pickleball last week and loves it, so. But we see that as, as future as well. Thank you very much for your time.
So was, so Tyler was allowed to sign that document?
We were told we had to submit that, that particular document, and we were told to, we had to have a signature on that, and we assumed that as the owner-to-be, that would, the prospective owner, that's why he signed it, not knowing that Key Mansfield would have to sign it.
Yeah.
Got it.
As the, as the property owner, but Key obviously doesn't see that as a need because he hasn't developed the property. So we took the initiative that way.
He is the owner, he should be the one requesting it.
Correct. If, if that is per the city charter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, you have a hand up.
Yeah.
Mine's really short and sweet, I don't need to walk up there. My name's Rob Sline. I have a question to the last speaker. Why this property and no other commercial property?
Right here, right here. Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah, you can. He's asking.
We're a community-based business, number one. Not only can people walk to this area, but it's, it's a, if we were to develop a concept like this in the commercial district, we would not have the green space, which we want to preserve, the majority of the green space that's there for action, activity, motion, et cetera. That doesn't, we're not allowed to do that in an already developed area that doesn't possess the green space around the, the existing property.
It's, I'm sorry, it still don't answer my question, but, because most of us are not proposed for you coming into this town, that's why it's been a business. What we propose is where you're coming into town. And you guys stated from the first meeting when I came, this is more than enough property that you guys don't need.
No, we're, it's, the property is offered, it's not being divided from the, from the current owner. So, it's either that, you either purchase that property or don't purchase it. We're purchasing a section of it.
If you don't need it later down the road, you're going to probably sell it like that.
No, we're committed to keeping that property. We're committed to the concept that we, that we are developing as far as work well, play well, be well. If we have green space that's friendly in the building, has, has the proper setbacks for the lighting, for not to be intrusive to the, with the current site plan, not to be intrusive to the walkways, the roadways. Our business is such that people would be scheduled from eight to six, eight AM to six PM, not all at once, like when it was a school, when there'd be a rush at the morning hour, noon hour, and when the school was letting out, as far as traffic increases significantly at those periods of time.
Well, thank you for the answering my question.
Yes, sir.
Or trying to. I'm done.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions, I don't need to stand up there. You said, first of all, that you're going to be occupying, what, 50% of this building?
Correct.
Okay. The drawing does not represent that. It shows a significant area in the back that was supposed to be for a coffee shop, which I believe your son said he knew nothing about how to run a coffee shop, and you haven't been able to find someone to occupy that. Plus, you have a second floor, which now we've been told is going to be used for storage for a chiropractor office. So are you sure of your fact that you're going to take up 50% of that for the chiropractor office?
With floors one and two, are you taking up more than that? Obviously. The upstairs is, will be like conference meeting space for our team, for team building, storage, et cetera. We'll have our power plant up there, so it doesn't have to be on the main floor. And the, oh, we've also been in conference with four different businesses in, in and around the Waseon area as far as occupying that space. However, if we can't say we're going to build the space, they can't commit to occupying a space prior to even, just when it's a concept. But we have interest that has been generated by several different businesses.
What type of business are you visiting with?
The coffee businesses.
Are they retail?
No, 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 no. It's, because the, ideally, the concept would be to have a shared workspace. People that are now working from home, that don't, don't want to necessarily work, be in the home when they work from home, have a shared workspace that has a coffee shop that's to offer coffee in, in those arenas.
Just a couple more questions. The fellow who's addressed council for you in the past said several times, when talking about this project, there are no guarantees. Well, that made me very nervous. When he's talking no guarantees, is there a guarantee that you are absolutely going to use that green space for pickleball courts and a dog park, which to me, as a longtime businessperson, makes no business sense at all? You'll never recoup that money. Just the fence alone around the dog park is going to cost you a fortune, and the city spent 150,000 on the pickleball courts, and they haven't installed the fences yet. How are you going to recoup that money?
It isn't necessarily our plan to fund that whole project, to fund the, like, say, the pickleball courts. If we have other people that are interested, that want to, that want to invest in that in, as far as a shared expense, then we would welcome something like that. You know, whether it be the city, whether it be private enterprise or whatnot. But our goal is not, we're not going to be building and building other buildings, we're not going to be developing it into, you know, selling it off into, say, to a Rite Aid or Walgreens or whatnot. That is not the intent and not the way that we do business, going against the words that we come into a community with.
Well, you don't have to worry about Rite Aid, they just filed for bankruptcy. But I am very concerned that at some point, you're going to look at your business plan and say, this isn't going to work, and you sell that, that property off, and there's no way to stop you from doing that. And we suddenly see a lot of retail or other businesses that would really destroy that neighborhood.
What I can lend you to, if you, I invited members of council, as well as the planning commission, to come and visit our office in Waterville. We've, I've been in two different locations in Waterville. I started the business in 1986, was in one building for 31 years in the downtown area. We outgrew that space, we built another space, which was a bigger brick and mortar and found out. It isn't necessarily the requirement for a business of our type to build a large brick and mortar and have that long-term investment, and this particular design came up, and we, we have built that, and people said, you're going to build that without having another renter? At that point, we didn't even have any interest in another renter. But we're committed to Waterville, just as we're committed to Waseon, we're here to stay. And we would be, if we came here, we would be here to stay as well. I'm a man of my word, and it's such that I am a man of my word, I've never broken it. You know, I can make that commitment to the, to the residents and to the city.
You're part-owner of Rebel.
I am now, as, as the older person, I've been...
I had a business partner out in South Dakota who said he was a man of his word. He was killed by a drunk driver, and my other partners completely changed the direction we were going. So, there's no guarantees, are there?
There are not. You are 100% correct.
Thank you.
I just have a question for council. First of all, with the validity of the, of the application, it does not meet what the charter says. To my opinion, that application should be void because it was not done properly. And my other question is, based on this new design that we saw, does that change the specifications that were given to the planning commission? With the stairways that were put on there and the different things? Being that they've changed that design of the building, does that affect what planning and that, and zoning approved?
Yeah, I think, I think the statement of what the charter provides is correct in terms of the owner, specifying the owner as the entity that would file the application. It's common practice in these kinds of situations where there's a contract for the sale of property for the prospective owner to sign the application and submit it, both in these kind of situations and also when trying to get a conditional use. So technically, yes. Practically speaking, let's put it this way, if council were to deny the application based on the technical deficiency, and it were to be appealed, excuse me, in some fashion, I would hazard guess the court would indicate that's a technical violation, not a proper basis to deny an application. But, I mean, I can't predict what a court would do. But in terms of the comings and goings of these kinds of things, it's just common practice for a prospective owner to, to file the application.
Does our charter state when it comes forward, if there is anything of, of change, amended from it first going to planning and then down to where the city sees it, the council sees it? Because obviously, we've seen with planning commission, they view the first picture, which is just a picture, it's not the plans, it's not the floor plans, you guys got the same plans as we did. But then the second thing is that the application, so is that something that would be amended by planning? Or we should go back to planning because of the application not being filled out correctly, which has been brought forward to this council and to the public? Or do we have council vote on the application being amended to be changed? I feel that if, planning commission had the application in front of them, they, if they did not see that, we ask, you know, is everything in place, is everything fine from every perspective of the city? We're told yes, but that is the one thing that would have been missed up there that we did not see. And you're saying that it's kind of not a huge thing, but yet, by the time it comes down to the council, it is being told that it is wrong. Or not wrong, but it should have been filed by the owner. Does the charter say that needs to go back to planning commission to review? Because it's, it's, or does council amend that?
There's no mechanism in the charter for sending something back to planning commission. I think the way it's envisioned is that it empowers council to approve, deny, or modify the recommendation.
Okay, as it's coming forward. All right. That's what I needed to know. All right.
I just, I have another question for chiropractic. Am I, am I correct to assume that this is the only property in Waseon that you've looked at?
Yes.
That you've considered?
We, we looked in the, in the commercial district, and that, that did not fit the, the concept that we were looking for, because we wanted more green space and we wanted more area around the business as compared to the current business district, district that didn't offer that.
Okay, at least three, if not four times, I've heard about you talking about people walking, riding. Are you aware that we have a commercial property right on a bike path and a walking path that has green space right behind it that adjoins to a park? has green space right behind it that adjoins to a park? I wasn't aware of that.
It'd be a perfect spot. It's right up by Dollar General, you should check it out.
Okay.
I was just going to comment that same space is available. And there's also space where the old drive-in used to be. And a year or two ago, the area behind McDonald's was available, that whole green space back behind there. That's another place where you have room for dog park, pickleball courts, and so on.
Jim already bought that land. McDonald's already bought all that land.
Yeah, because of the access.
But the other two, I think, are available. And what Joanne said earlier, she wished that counsel would go out and question people. My family moved to town here when I was 10 years old and I've lived here 66 years and I know a lot of people and they know me. And when I go out to town, my wife won't even go with me because she says everybody comes up to you. But I have, I've probably had 40 people come up to me and not one has been in favor of this. They're not, they're not opposed to the organization coming in. They don't want it in that location. What they're afraid of, what a few have conveyed to me is, what happens if an open lot becomes available in another neighborhood? And somebody says, oh, I want to change that. And now we change that to commercial. And then there's another spot where there's an opening. And that becomes commercial. We have enough commercial area. If we don't, then I'd say we amend things and change things at a later date. But I don't think we got people moving in at the rate of 10 a year that we run out of commercial space. That's just my opinion. That's why I voted no. I'm going to continue to vote no. I don't think it should be changed. I have not heard one person, one person, I know them all age groups, I had a lot of them in school, that have said, I'm in favor of this, let's do it. They all bring up Dollar General, you know, the old drive-in space. There's probably more available, but I just can't believe that this is best for the community. I'm sorry.
Okay, can I get my two cents in? Since I'm running for mayor against the mayor and I'm on city council and I've been here for 45 years and I bought property on Odeki Street and I run a business for 45 years on Odeki Street. And the reason I bought land on Odeki Street is I can't afford Shoop Avenue. Shoop Avenue is $300,000 to $400,000. And the land I bought was cheap. The whole thing with the buildings and the mini warehouse, $225,000. That I can afford. It's a P and L thing at the end of the year. I think I'm the only business person basically on this board. And you got to run a business and you got to make a P and L. So I was way under because when I called the Otter's office and used my taxes, because they're all going up this year, home taxes, farmland is going to over double. So I thought $500,000 ought to be enough money with land and a building. I was wrong. Somebody, an architect, said 2 million. So $500,000, according to our Otter's office, taxes on that property will be $12,100, which it generates the same as mine. 58.5% of that money goes to the schools. So that's $7,078. But if you take 2 million, you multiply all that by three, we just went through a 1.75 mil levy where everybody in this room, if you work for a living, has to pay 1.75 more millage for a Waseon school system. So here's an opportunity, I believe, to get tax money and revenue coming into the city to go to the school, to go to the county, to go to the city. But I can't afford the dirt on, and Steve's right, there is land over there. It was a million dollars for the old drive-in theater. Now it's left down to about $300,000 just so they can get rid of it. But the land at Tractor Supply was five acres, $600,000 for the dirt. I can't afford $600,000. I don't know if anybody out here can afford $600,000 for five acres of land. So the Odeki Street land that's next to me, which actually has horses on it, I'm next to horses at my business, is 129,000, okay? So you say, do you want to live next to this? Well, I live next to the Baptist church on Odeki Street. And it started small and now it's been added on to six times and it does not look like my house or any of the houses in the Pat West subdivision. The Baptist church don't. So I live right. Their land and my land are the same property line. So, and it's okay with me. And in my business on Odeki Street, the two commercial businesses, I got horses next to me, which is okay with me too, because they don't come over and steal anything. They just eat grass. But there is a difference, as Steve says. Can you really afford land on Shoop Avenue? Can we really afford the land on Airport Highway? Five acres for 600,000? And that's why they're not building as quick as it can be built, because the land is so much money. Since our building was put up by the heights in '78 and '79, I've had to put a new roof on the mini warehouse by Perry Roof and a brand-new roof on my commercial building by Perry Roof. On a Quonset hut design, it's thicker and you ain't going to actually do it. But I think the only residents are, really the big complaint is the design of the building. Or do you want no building there? Do you want any building?
I want to say I'm concerned about, I mean, something that you're not taking into consideration.
What's that?
Is you're talking about all this tax revenue, you're going to get decreased tax revenue from us by our property depreciating.
Yes.
From that being there.
Mine never went down. It's going up.
And the other thing, you cannot tell me, do you know how much that property next to Dollar General costs?
No.
Neither does he.
How much is it?
I don't know either, because I haven't checked into it. But nobody in this room has checked into that. He could find out, he could get it for $50,000. We don't know.
You don't know.
Because he's never looked.
I don't know if the wagon is still older or not. Gator used to own that. But I don't know who owns it.
When a business typically comes in like this one, do homes go down in value, up in value, or stay stagnant?
Typically, we, for commercial businesses, the impact on residents in a neighborhood from a tax perspective either doesn't change or the properties continue to go up in value as the economic conditions allow.
Carol, I got a question. You said you had a property that you had to buy that was cheaper than going out on Shoop. Was that already zoned commercial?
It's industrial.
B4, right? Or industrial?
It's industrial.
It has to be B4 if you've got a business and then you have industrial, that would probably be B4. Because I know.
Dick Vogt owned all that land.
Right.
And you just bought some.
It wasn't residential, though.
No, no.
And the ones next to the horse are B4. So that's mixed use, all in that area is mixed use now. Whether you're in industrial, I'm thinking you're probably B4. So that never was a residential area when you purchased it?
No, I didn't say it was.
No, I'm asking you if it was, because I didn't know either.
No, it was industrial, because Dick owned it.
That's a big difference of the zoning, I think, is what I'm saying. Okay.
I just make a statement, I can't afford land, like Steve says, on Shoop. Or don't come into town. Airport Highway.
My only argument toward you, so is if you follow that logic, it's too expensive to build out on Shoop Avenue? So now what's going to happen to other businesses that say, oh, I can't afford to build on Shoop Avenue, but here's an empty lot in town I can build on because it's cheaper? The next thing you know, our fears that we've tried to express to you guys is that businesses, instead of building out where the commercial area is and intended for, are going to start looking for areas in town where the land's cheaper. And then we're going to have businesses popping up within our neighborhoods. That is what we don't want. If you're going to try to build, build, build a business, then you should be looking into commercial properties. If it's too expensive, then something else needs to be done. I'm not sure what it is, but building on residential areas because it's cheaper is not the answer.
Here's a map that Sarah made of your area. So all the red areas are commercial properties.
Well, there are at least businesses running off of them. I don't know.
Okay, and that's all within a three-block radius of.
But they've been there since I moved there, they've existed.
What's that?
New ones that are being added.
Huh?
I said, they've been, they've existed since I moved there, they haven't been added.
No, they're existing right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I already knew that when I moved into the area. Now you're saying you want to add more commercial areas to the neighborhood that I moved into.
So you guys, you really just want it as residential period? And who, you got a, you got a contractor to build these? In 20 years, has anybody?
Is that our responsibility?
I'm just asking a question. Has anybody came forward to build homes in this area?
I mean, I don't know. I mean, as far as people saying, well, we're not going to build, it was too close to railroad tracks, look on the other side of the railroad track. There's homes that are even closer and people live there just fine. So the argument of no one's going to build a home there because of the railroad, I don't believe it. And I think if the person that owns the property, maybe they have not tried to find a developer, maybe they're not, you know, actively trying to get it developed, I don't know, I can't answer that. But there are options for residential and I believe that it should stay residential and not be putting commercial businesses there.
What we've been trying to say, what I've tried to say, is we want to maintain the integrity and the complexion of our neighborhood. And that's all these older homes that we all, that have the older homes, have worked hard to maintain them and to build them and decorate them and maintain the original integrity of our homes. And we want to keep it that way. And I have nothing against the doctors, I'm sure they're probably fantastic doctors, but I don't care to have a Quonset hut a half a block from my house. And I don't believe that what, I'm not arguing with you, Matt, but I believe if we went, we reach a point that someone, some of us have to sell our homes and we have a Quonset hut across the street, I wouldn't buy it. And I just wish, we have all these people here that are speaking on behalf of how they feel, they don't want the Quonset hut, they want to keep it residential. That's the bottom line. We can keep standing up here and repeating this over and over and over again, but that is the essence of what we're trying to say. And we hope that you will listen, speaking from our hearts of how we feel. We want to keep it residential.
Want to keep the integrity of the property around there. You start putting up different types of buildings, it's going to change everything.
Okay, we got one more.
We got one more in the back.
The original owner of that property, when he bought it from the schools, did he check the zoning before he bought it? It's my understanding he didn't. So why should we suffer for somebody not doing their homework and finding out what they bought first? And now you guys are just flip-flopping, let them buy it, do what they want? Makes no sense. No sense at all.
I really love it. It's been all these years. And, you know, people say, oh, we wouldn't want to build next to a railroad track. I live about a block and a half from railroad track. After a while, you don't even hear the trains. You get so used to it, it's become, it just, you become numb to it. And, you know.
One of the things that Jamie said when we talked about how the city is up 34% in profits and we said, where is that coming from? Are we taxing the people more or what's happening? And she said, well, local businesses are doing really well. Right? So like, that's my big thing. And I think that's kind of what you were just saying is like, you know, economic growth, I want to see Waseon thrive, I want to see Waseon grow and be developed. I know, I think we all do as well. I appreciate that about everybody wanting to see Waseon thrive and become amazing. But what I don't want is to hinder businesses coming into Waseon and for that to be such a headache that who wants to come and then the taxes get rolled over onto the people? And we've had to increase taxes twice or three times since I've been on council and I've only been on council a year and a half. And I don't like that as a resident here in Waseon to see taxes go up because, you know, we only have two water lines that are in. It's like, okay, well, now we're going to have to increase the water bill because we have to do that. And I see the importance of it. And so it's like, yeah, I'm going to vote yes on that. Right? I think maybe, I know Scott voted no on that, I can't remember what you voted, Steve, but it's important to bring revenue in and it's important to keep businesses coming in and not kind of roadblock them. And I think that, you know, looking at the big scale Ohio in a sense, Amazon's putting $7.8 billion into central Ohio over the next six years. So that's going to impact not just Columbus or central Ohio, but it's going to trickle down and impact other areas of Ohio. And so I want to make sure that we're prepared and ready for that as not a tiny little town, but as a growing and thriving community.
My wife won't have to wait overnight to get her.
That's right. Same day, you'll labor it.
Just one more.
Oh.
This is you guys.
I'm Tyler Summers, I'm actually part of the Indian Hills subdivision. There's two, two groups of people here right now. There's the Indian Hills residents along with those that are on Elm Street. Just wanted to point that out. I really appreciate the support from my neighborhood. So I'm here because I'm looking to see if legislation is coming down the pipe between maybe from the mayor to council. So just to lay a little bit of groundwork, September 25th, 2023, there was a planning board meeting. During this meeting, the planning board heard strong, compelling concerns from our neighborhood. For me, my discontent was and still remains the loss of generic language, the loose and generic language in the permit application, the parking of streets, the safety. Mayor Huner told us during this meeting, she was going to put forth and pass some legislation to protect not just our neighborhood, but other neighborhoods here in Waseon. The legislation was identified by the mayor as the way the city was going to protect us citizens from negative impact of like halfway houses, reentry facilities, other styles of group homes that may not allow them, and by not allowing them in our residential areas. She mentioned that it was going to be just a simple pass with two readings. So it's been about a month since we were told legislation was going to be coming down the pipe. I'm here today with, again, support of my neighbors here to see where we're at, keeping that promise and seeing where the legislation is to protect us just in case the planning committee approves the conditional permit. So I'm here today, hopefully.
You're asking me?
I'm asking you or anybody else.
When all of that came forward in the planning commission, and I do have, I hopefully have some people back here on the planning commission, those were your concerns. The parking on the streets, halfway house, which I think the planning commission voted no to that change of use at the halfway house. So that one is done. As far as what's coming forward in the change of use, which does not come down to council, the reason I question why you're here, is the fact that the change of use in the planning commission, we had, just like we did here, the company comes forward, they request the change of use permit, and that is sunshine on that application. We did double-check that. The second thing is they wanted to use it as a senior living, possibly for hospice and elderly. There were a lot of concerns from the community that live in that area, why we're allowing this to come in and reasons, they had justifiable reasons. The one thing that I seen that I wasn't getting a lot from this side is the fact that I seen a lot of back and forth. As far as the legislation, Tyler, that, we got to get through the readings first before we can make legislative changes. And legislative changes go through code. And before we can even see what is happening, you're asking about parking legislation. You were asking about, we were talking, I think, about what would be on the contract or how it would fall back into if it did not last, is it going to go back to residential, things like that? That's all stuff that has to go back to council to vote on to change that legislation. I never promised that we would do that. What I said is, in the. I never promised that we would do that. What I said is, in the contract with the company, that is something that could be put into the contract from the cities, the planning commissions, more or less asking them if this, you know, telling them more or less, this is how we want to see it. Changing the wording of seniors that are, or eighteen-year-olds that have disabilities to seniors, which means fifty-five, that is happening. This is all coming back, which would have gone to be in the October twenty-third meeting for planning. So as far as legislation, until this follows through, we can't change legislation mid somebody coming forward. They got to follow that, what's in legislation, what's in place. We can't change it on a company.
I guess my concern is, so regardless of what the permit says, the application says, sorry, the application says, the terminology, the wording on all that, it's my understanding, like, the way it was presented to us was regardless of whatever that says on that conditional permit, new legislation was hopefully going to be put in place where regardless of what that says, that wouldn't be allowed in like the residential areas. So that's where I'm, it's not a planning board, it's not an appeals issue. It sounds like it was like your code issue.
Not allowed. I'm confused on what you're bringing forward.
So the, the styles of these residential, these group homes, right?
Oh, I see.
And, and the way that it was presented to us was new, new legislation would be put forth, so this type of thing wouldn't be allowed in a residential area, regardless of what the conditional permit said, if it was approved. That's, that's where we're at. Because the way it was presented to us in the original meeting, regardless of people's feelings and how everything was, how, what we say and, and the negotiation, it, it doesn't matter. It's whatever was written on the sheet. And so I guess.
We still have to go through a contract with this company, the city, right? Correct? The contract that goes forward.
It's not a contract. It would be a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
So the planning commission can indicate certain restrictions on the planning use, on the.
On the way they use it, for what's coming in now. It's the legislation that needs to be changed, that if they buy it and it's conditional use is for a senior center, and then they sell it or they, it doesn't go, and then it goes back to residential. It will always stay residential. But I think it states after a year, didn't we just put that into place? After a year, then it would go back to, to just residential, and they would have to come back to the city if they wanted to change that conditional use. Okay? So they have to come back and ask for that change before they change it.
Unless it's an apples-to-apples comparison of use. That's, that's what we're stuck with, that.
It really isn't though, because this is what they're here for. They're asking for the change of use. They can't, they have to get that permit, that permission for the change.
True. I'll, I'll say that. That is, that is a true statement, but if it's, if it's a elder care facility, and it was a negotiationary planning committee, but neither Huner nor I are on that one, that if it's an elder care facility and elders, anybody eighteen and older, based on how the application was written, this new legislation would trump that regardless of what the conditional permit was saying. That's the way it was, it seemed to be presented to us.
No, because it states that they're changing it on the application for seniors living, which was, means fifty-five and up. And you have to follow that, what they put on the application, fifty-five and up. And that is what they're going to be coming in as. They will not have, their use is going to be fifty-five and up. So there will not be any eighteen-year-olds coming in.
And just to clarify, sorry.
And no rehab. It was another thing that you, you guys discussed, and that was something that we wanted to make sure did not happen on this.
Okay. Just to just clarify, the three readings for whatever legislation you identified, I guess, can you just clarify what you meant by that then?
The three readings?
Right. It was just an easy pass with three readings, the legislation to protect our neighborhood. What did you mean by that then?
I honestly cannot remember unless I look at the minutes and read up to what it goes through, the three readings, because it is a, they come forward, you had your public hearing, and then they read. So whether it's, the public hearing was the first to hear, and then we did not act on that because we wanted to come back with the flexibility of both and said, you know, this, and we even said it was good. So this is going back and forth, but the planning commission reads on it, not council. The planning commission makes that decision. And then if you're not happy with the planning commission, you go to the zoning board of appeals. That is what is in our charter, to appeal what planning commission does. It never comes down here.
Is there three readings within the planning commission meeting? Is there?
It's passage, and then.
There's not a three reading.
Not like council, but we didn't act on it, so we were coming back to whether we were going to pass on it. So I'm, I'm sorry if I said three readings. That is my bad. Because honestly, I, I, I'm confused on what you mean by that. So if I said it, I'm not denying it. I'm sure it was in minutes because she took amazing minutes on that meeting. But as far as it going forward, it has not gone forward yet. That's what the October twenty-third meeting is, and that's where we discuss the changes that you requested to go for.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to move forward on the agenda. Thank you all for being patient. All right.
Mayor, if, if, Mayor, if I can just, some housekeeping, I just make a motion to go ahead and close the floor, if that's okay.
I thought I just did.
I think the council opened it. I think the council opened it, so I don't know how you can.
It's, it's just an open floor, but go ahead.
Do you want to vote or all in favor?
All in favor, please. We need to move forward.
All in favor to close the floor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Department have reports, please.
All right. Well, I get to speak on behalf of the fire department. This past month, we implemented our new CAD system through the sheriff's office. Some growing pains are going through with that, but it's working very well as far as the CAD is beating our pagers even. So we're on the, we're down the stairs before even the pagers go off for that. So that's fantastic. Obviously, it's October, so fire prevention month is here. We're at schools every day, or those preschools are coming here. We get to interact with kids on a daily basis and do all that, so it's a fun time for us as far as that goes. And hopefully, they're hearing that message as the winter time is coming up. You know, it seems when fires go up, you know, fireplaces, you know, people are using heaters, things like that. So we're really trying to drive that message for this month.
Is it, real quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Like a time that people can come downstairs, or is it kind of open if people are in town?
Schools.
Oh, the schools, they schedule them with Chief Turkey. And then we've been at, we've been at the elementary, the primary, and that as well. So, but as always, people, we love it when people stop by. Unfortunately, the weather's getting colder, so we're going to try and keep the heating bills down a little bit by leaving the doors closed, but that doesn't mean that we're not open for business. By all means, stop up, we'll show you the trucks anytime.
Get the homeschool group.
Yep, yep. Bring them on up. Just contact Chief Turkey, and he will be more than happy to set that up. Absolutely. We got our three new stair chairs from Stryker. I'm sure you guys saw the Facebook post. We're the third, third department in the nation to use those. So those are going to be a great acquisition for us as saving backs and lifting as far as that goes. We came to you guys a few months ago for the requisition of a lot of money for those auto pulses, for the new CPR devices for our community. Zoll just reported last night that they are beginning to ship. So we're on the list, so we will have those before the end of the year. And I promise you guys, those will be in service, and we are so thankful and grateful to have those, as that will help us out tremendously. And then the last thing I have for you, it was presented, is the mental health app. We're just waiting on the release of that to be complete from the company, and then that will be rolled out to our employees for use when they, so thank you.
Is there a lot of training on those new devices that hopefully we'll get before the end of the year?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So there'll be at least three days of training to hit every single shift, and then after that, we will train on it every shift until it becomes muscle memory like, like the old one is. There's not a whole lot of, there are some few changes as far as it goes, but the changes are going to be easier, so it's going to make the learning process go that much faster.
Nice.
Yeah. So thank you for that so much.
Mayor, can I be excused for just a minute?
Yes. Six thirty-nine. Okay. Chief?
To recap a couple of things from committee, the whole RSRO, Brad Croninger, he's new to the SRO position this year. Just recently completed Alice training and also school threat assessment training. He's begun working with the schools, also with the fire department, talking about different times when we can do some safety drills. And getting that cooperation with the fire department and the schools is, is really going to go a long way in keeping our Waseon schools safe. We are close to completing our background checks on applicants for the open patrol position. The last thing I have, just coming up at the end of the month, trick-or-treat on Halloween from six to seven-thirty. Prior to that, there is what's going to be called a trunk-or-tree by some of the downtown businesses on Fulton Street. I believe it's from five to six.
Five to six.
Yeah. We're going to have some street closings.
Not full.
Not completely full. So Fulton Street, the southbound traffic north of the tracks will be closed. And then on the south side of the tracks, it'll be the northbound traffic will be closed. That's for the local businesses that are setting this trunk-or-tree up. I have buses, I guess, coming in, different, a whole bunch of cool cars and themes and stuff that are going to be decorating our stuff. So we have an open way for everybody to kind of get around using, you know, Beach Birch or Depot or Commercial Streets, ways to get around that area. But there is going to be that closed. But also, just a reminder for the residents, I know Elm Street, Oak Street, very, very, very busy. Huner Dishing is very busy. Just please watch out for the kids that are walking. You know, they're excited and not always paying attention for cars, so just slow down and take the extra time.
Chief, one question. It came to my attention just recently, one of the new variations of what people are utilizing candy for and putting in a substance in it as a new one, is some form of a gummy bear or a gummy. It's a new candy that they're utilizing, and they really wanted parents to be aware of that. If there's any way you can look that up and get it out on your site so that parents can be aware that this is something new that's coming forward. It just was brought out, and it's supposed to be laced, and I really would like that information.
Definitely, yeah. We always try to post some, some Halloween safety tips and different things.
This is a new one.
Add on there, so we'll definitely look into that.
Thank you. Okay. Chief?
Okay, just a couple of updates from Thursday's council home meeting. One, I wanted to get out to the residents is that we're going to be starting to gear up for leaf pickup. Obviously, leaves are starting to come down. This will be the last week of brush pickup on the north side. So if you've got brush, get it out on the north side this week. Next week will be the last pickup for brush this year on the south side. After that, we'll be gearing up for leaves because it's the same truck that is being utilized for both. Obviously, that, if we have a large storm or something that brings a lot of winds down, that'll, you know, change that. But we will be going to full leaf pickup by the first, right after Halloween, the first of November, we'll be starting that and picking them up as needed, usually through November and part of December, before we switch back over to brush again. Working with the EPA to get all of our paperwork in by the end of the year. Also got notified by the EPA that we have a lead and copper inventory that has to be done by October of twenty twenty-four, where we need to know where all of our stuff is in the ground, including in residence. So a lot of the residents will be getting contacted, referenced, asking for their assistance to identify what type of plumbing they have inside their house. And if they don't know, we'll be more than happy to help. Fortunately for us, we've got a good head start on it because as we're putting in the new meters in residence, our guys were doing an inventory of what they were hooking up to, so a lot of the information we already know, but we're still about four or five hundred houses that we're on an unknown on, so we'll be getting that before next October. And working with Tom's office on annexation of the enterprise area out by the, the area out by the cemetery, as well as the speed study being done on South Shute Avenue between Leggett and Ortho.
We're going to get it.
I think so, one way or another, whether we want to or not. The state wants to raise the speed out there, and we would prefer not to.
I would like to have a turnway out there. If they want to raise the speed limit, then I think we should have a turnway. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of rear-end collisions.
Got a fifty-five mile an hour zone, going to speed in a turn, or circle with semis going through that.
It's not a good thing. Not a good thing.
All right.
Keith, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Keith, I, I always drive by Don's Automotive. I always see that wonderful-looking red truck with the black bed. Have you given that any thought at all, to adding that to our fleet?
I, I've talked with the guys. They, the issue with that, Shane, is most of our stuff is, we can, like even our trucks, we can pick the bed up, move, move the beds. That one there, it's just got, it's got one use, and I just can't see putting the money out for a vehicle that only has one use, that we can't get more use out of it throughout the year.
Thank you.
Tom?
Nothing really to spend council's time on, just to point out that there are two pieces of legislation for read tonight, and the first one is a first reading on two thousand twenty-three dash four, which I think council's aware will have, have to amend the agenda, I guess. It references chapter one-one-one-seven, but actually it's three-seven-seven. That's the golf cart ordinance. And I just simply, we just simply took the, the restrictions that council had, the committee had recommended, and then put those into the form of a legislation to amend that particular ordinance. So it's really all.
Real quick, committee reports.
Tree commission, that's me. Have to bear with me, it's past my bedtime. John provided the committee with an updated list of tree removals through town and in the parks. Committee is also working on updating the city's tree ordinance, and Laura, Laura Camp's doing most of the work there. So when she's done, we're going to present it to the council, and that's all, that's all we did.
Good. Thank you. No action?
No.
And park board?
That would be me, too.
And this is where you had your correction amendments on park board, is that correct?
I need to look at.
The last sentence of the minutes.
Yes, yes.
What's that?
Clemmons and Nelson. Yeah, there would be an amendment of a typo on that one, just adding the letter N on the end.
Keith gave us an update on the pickleball courts. They're done, look really nice. He got some quotes for the fencing, and they all averaged about forty thousand dollars, and Rotary has agreed to pay twenty thousand of them. So Larry Zimmerman made a motion to purchase the fencing. I don't know if we still talking next year to try to do that?
We're going to have to find out at this point in time with the weather, if we can even fit it in before the end of the year.
Well, I think the quote is what they're asking for in the deposit. If you get the deposit in, then you get the quote. They're afraid that if they, it's only good for a month, the quote was, so.
They'll lock, the, once you pay the deposit, they'll lock the price in.
Do you know which way we're going in, or you still?
From what, the two quotes that you had were the only two quotes we're going to get. The other third quote, they are booked up throughout. They couldn't do it until next, next year.
Okay.
Are we leaning towards the coated, or the?
No, it would be the black powder coat, because then maybe, for a few thousand dollars more, it made a lot more sense in putting galvanized. It would be, have to be taken care of and up kept.
Then Keith also said that the county mowed down the natural grass out there. It was kind of a bad time to plant it. It got dry and the stuff. Only thing that came up was weeds, so hopefully next, are they going to replant that, do you think? They're going to try to replant it. Also, the pump at the swimming pool, they're going to rebuild it because it was about two-thirds less the cost than a new pump. Now, it's still running, but if it goes down, and then the pool's shut down or until they get it fixed. So what they're going to do is like do the maintenance ahead of time, and then, and rebuilding it, it will last just as long as a new pump and be cheaper. Also, they want to do additional parking by the pool. It'd be where we bought that land. Right, right now, it's just going to be. Uh, right, right now, it's just gonna be, uh, gravel and eventually, uh, blacktop. I don't think you gotta take too many trees down, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to keep all the good usable trees and just take the scrub brush down.
Yeah, it looks good in there right now.
Yeah, no.
And then, uh, mayor brought up the park signs. Some of them are getting a little bit nasty. They've been there for what, ten years or fifteen?
Oh, my gosh. Like twenty years.
Okay. The cost to redo one would be four to five thousand, to replace it'd be seventeen, and I think we talked about just doing like one a year.
One or two a year.
One, one or two a year, so, um, we'd have, well, we have two different motions, one for the fencing and one for the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Two different motions.
Okay. Questions?
Uh, rehab of the sign, something we might see in the two thousand twenty-four financial plan?
Yeah.
Including, including the parking. If you approve the recommendation for the parking lot, then I will bring that to council in next year's budget.
Same as the signs, and I think those were just a couple a year, kinda like how they were built, because they are expensive.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah, but the artist is the one that's going by and seeing where the damage is and who's gonna give us the worst ones.
Okay.
And go from there. Okay, so we have two, uh, things to vote on here to accept from park board, uh, the, the fence, and also move forward on, um, what was the other one?
The parking lot.
Parking lot, thank you.
I'll move on the fence.
I'll second it.
Recommendation that the city purchase fencing for the new pickle, pickleball courts, pickleboard? Pickleball?
Pickleball.
Pickleball courts with the, with the city paying half and the Waseon Rotary Club paying for the other half, moved by Councilor Heising and seconded by Council President Stierks. Any discussion?
And fencing on that.
I think every so often, city council, we have some disagreement, but one thing I think for certain is that we can all agree, uh, no, thank you to the Waseon Rotary Club for, uh, contributing half to this project, so.
You do a lot for the city.
Thank you.
You do. They will be utilizing these courts greatly. They like, they're pickleball.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Tierney?
Wouldn't it be Steers?
Council President, it's past my bedtime, too.
Yeah. Did I second it?
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Tierney?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Sixty-eight, zero, nays, motion carries.
You get to motion.
Second on the agenda would be the parking lot.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Who was the first? Brandon.
I was.
Recommendation that the city put a new parking by the church for the pool, moved by Councilor Chamberlain and seconded by Councilor Stickley. Any discussion? Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
It's a change.
You're all right, just keep going.
Just fire down the road, you don't have to have any order to it.
Councilor Tierney?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Heising? Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Sixty-eight, zero, nays, motion carries.
We're almost there.
All right, let's move on to our legislation. Um, I'm missing half, yeah. Yes.
The first reading should be golf cart, right?
That's what Tom explained.
Yeah, we talked.
Three-seven-seven.
Three-seven-seven.
We got the golf carts in there, broiled in.
We got the golf carts.
I need the golf carts.
And it's not on emergency, it's just the first reading.
So, we're gonna be, uh, going over the first reading of legislation, and the ordinance is, is that correct? No?
Hmm.
Okay, so, it would be, um, the codes, um, coming forward with the change of the use of golf carts on our streets, and that would be codified ordinance in chapter three-seven-seven. And I'm looking for it in here, and this will be our first reading.
Um, I'm comfortable making a motion, I was including our packet.
Yeah, we have it in the packet, and everybody's been able to read it.
I did have a question about that. I did, I requested, I, I have no background knowledge of misdemeanors, um, you know, maybe fortunately. Um, I don't know what, what that language was in the golf cart, you know, guidelines. If someone could, I mean, I asked last time, if I could just have a rundown of, I, I don't need it right now, but I just wanted to know what those misdemeanors really represented as far as the penalties for not following the rules and regulations set forth on golf carts, if that makes sense.
I think, I think a minor misdemeanor.
Minor misdemeanors.
There were three different levels listed.
It might be a hundred fifty, but the fine only, for this minor misdemeanor.
I just wanted to know what people were facing if they did not.
For her first offense, Sarah, it would be a fine only. Shane, we monitor you. You'll be on duration for five years.
Five years?
Okay. We get a motion for this?
I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash four on first reading, moved by Council Chamberlain and seconded by Councilor Tierney. Tierney, any discussion? Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Tierney?
Yes.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Sixty-eight, zero, nays, motion carries.
You said you felt confident with it, I think that was, um, reading. Okay, moving on, we have a second reading.
I don't know.
Nothing. Okay, third reading of legislation. It's ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash three, an ordinance amending codified ordinance chapter one-one-one-seven, establishment of districts and maps and amending the official zoning map declared an emergency. So, we need a motion for this.
Why is it declaring an emergency?
On third reading.
It can be effective immediately? I don't know.
It wasn't council's intention, it was just it would be a third reading.
It's been on emergency the whole time as it's gone through, so it just says third reading, correct? Effective immediately, third reading, isn't it, after the?
Well, the difference between a third reading and emergency reading, if it's on emergency, it's effective immediately if you then pass it. So you have two, you can do a read, put it on emergency, and if you decide not to put it on emergency, you can still proceed to the vote on the third reading. The charter requires that, or the rule, I'm not sure, the charter or the code requires that when you place something on emergency, it'd be done on a separate read.
And, and this is on the Elm Street property?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So if council votes to put it on emergency and then passes it, then it would be effective immediately. If it votes not to put it on emergency and then votes on the legislation, if it passes, it would be effective thirty days after its passage.
I would just like, uh, to every, have an opportunity to share some thoughts. Now, the, the neighborhood has spoke, uh, clearly, um, in great numbers, and I appreciate that. A lot of people, I think, think of this in a negative way. Um, I think of this as a very positive way. This is the legislative process at work. I'm sort of nerdy when it comes to this type of stuff. I sort of love the legislative process. Um, so this is, uh, this is something that I think we all can appreciate, that our democratic system allows for folks to, to speak and share their thoughts and attempt to convince our elected officials one way or another. So this is, by far, is not a negative experience for me. This is, this is what I enjoy from the legislative perspective. Uh, but secondly, uh, as far as always here on this particular issue, Steve, you, you said you've never heard a negative comment about it. Uh, there's gonna be times as legislators, especially when we consider water rates and sewer rate increases, that we will not hear anybody for it. In my sixteen years of considering water rate and sewer rate increases, if I were to base that as my purpose behind legislation, because nobody has come up to me and said, I would love to increase my water rates.
But that's a necessity.
I know.
This isn't a necessity.
But you're allowing that to command the way you vote. So i- it's not, it's not my, uh, complete, um, it's not how I decide is based upon the entire public, uh, because I think there could be a minority opinion that could play into that. Um, and then sometimes, Steve, you're right, it is out of necessity. So I just wanna share, I, I appreciate everybody coming in and sharing your thoughts, either in writing, um, or here verbally, or through, uh, social media. Uh, thank you very much.
I think the, the only other thing that I'm gonna add to this before you guys vote is the fact that, um, we have six council people, you have a mayor, and you have administration. And just like Shane said, you have, um, people who feel necessity, you have people who feel that it's a right, you have people who feel I have a right. And with that being said, all six of us up here, including myself, seven, have the right to vote the way they feel is correct in their mind, their heart, and their gut, uh, that don't think anybody has gone one way or not, or not looked into everything, um, for the best interest of the city. So when this vote goes forward, everybody has a right to their opinion. You guys, this is your home, these guys got voted in to make these decisions, so. With that being said, let's move on with the vote. How are we going? We going third reading? Are we going emergency? It's under emergency right now.
Yeah, at this point, we're just waiting for a motion. Here we go.
You know, I've heard both sides. I've heard more on the negative side and probably, um, just like in person, I guess, on the negative side, and I've gotten emails, I've gotten phone calls, um, from people saying they're not opposed to it, and, um, you know, my wife is like, you know, I don't really like the building, but I like bringing business into Waseon, uh, because then it shows that we're growing. And I was like, yeah, you know, I, I disagree. I love the building, but, you know, so, um, you know, after hearing the things and I think the dialogue tonight, I really appreciated everything that everybody said tonight. I feel like it was a really good conversation, um, and that, you know, we talked about when it was brought to the planning commission, you know, when it first was brought to us, it seemed like there was excitement when it got brought to us, and so that got me excited, and I was like, yeah, let's bring business in, um, and then something flipped to where, uh, the excitement kinda died down a little bit. Um, but I am still excited about the growth of Waseon and expanding Waseon, um, and so for that reason, I'll go ahead and make the motion to, uh, pass it.
Under?
Under.
Right now, it's under emergency. Do you want it under emergency?
Council can just not move to put it on emergency.
Right.
Skip straight to the vote, if that's what it wants to do. If council's, um, inclined to put it on emergency, then someone could make that motion.
Oh, no, I, just as third reading is what I would like to make the motion as.
Okay.
Brandon, if you love us so much, join the army. You just go check it out.
So you want a second to go to the third reading? I'll second it.
Motion to place ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash three on final reading, and the final reading be passed, moved by Councilor Tierney and seconded by Councilor Stickley. Any discussion? Councilor Tierney?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
No.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
No.
Council President Stierks?
No.
So we don't go to the third reading?
So mayors, three a's, three nays, mayors. Mayor's call.
My intent here, because somebody changed his mind, was, um, to go against council's vote, because I, I can't stand the division in this city. And I'm now at the point that I'm gonna explain to this, uh, the people here, that with the three-three vote, when it comes down from the planning commission, you have to have a five-one against planning's recommendation. So with the three-three vote, whichever way the mayor chooses to vote, um, it will, if I choose yes, it more or less will go right back to a four, or, uh, yeah, four-three. Four-four and three yes, correct?
If you vote in favor of the measure, then it would pass, and the planning commission's recommendation would be approved. If you vote no, then
It fails.
there's, that's correct, because there's not a three-fourths majority
And then it goes back to council again. So, yes, that's that, because it's not a majority.
I'm confused. I thought we was only going on third reading or emergency.
No, we're talking about pass or fail.
The whole thing?
Yeah. Well, if you vote no, it, it stops, it's dead, right?
No. It goes back, because it's not a majority. It's not a ma- majority vote. It be, more or less comes right back to council, and you guys have to vote on it again. So, this is.
Just to clarify it, so, the charter, the way the charter is written, and it's consistent with the way the Ohio revise code, um, handles this for non-charter cities, that a planning commission's vote to be approved only needs a majority vote, but to be rejected, it has to be by three-quarters of council. So if the mayor votes in favor, that's a majority, four-three. If the mayor, uh, votes against it, it's three to four, and it's not three-quarters of those voting. And so the, uh, the third reading, the reading, would then essentially, uh, die, council would have to then, council's required within sixty days of the public hearing to either affirm, reject, or modi. So, uh, the long story short is if the mayor votes against it, then, uh, the, this legislation's ineffective, and we're ba- basically back to ground zero, no reads. But council's required under the code to do something within sixty days of the public hearing.
But it doesn't go back to the planning commission?
It does not.
No, it stays in council, so if it's a three-three.
How, how long can that, if I could go, just keep going if that's?
Yeah, that's why, this is what I'm gonna do. This is what I'm gonna do. I had a letter to explain my actions, but more or less, it all comes down to the fact that Rebel, we want you in the city, but I, from the day one, when I met and talked with you one-on-one, I do not want a divided city, and that is what's happening. We have a divided council, we have a divided, we have people who are not in favor, we have some who are saying they are in favor. So with that, I would hope that you could find grounds in Waseon, we welcome you to come, but Elm Street School is not. I vote in favor and say yes to the vote, and then I veto the vote, and it's done.
So when the mayor vetoes, uh, piece of legislation, council has sixty days from the veto to override the veto, but to override it, it has to have a three-quarters vote.
And I'm gonna say this is not my finest hour to go against council. After nine years, I've never done this, but I can't stand to see and hear the division with the city. We've had it before, I've sat through the water line, I've sat through the smoking issues, but this one by far reached me the hardest, so, let's move on.
Uh, Tom, just this is unchartered water for me, so she, the mayor voted yes for it.
So it passed.
Passed. And then she vetoed her, her vote?
I vetoed the council.
Vetoing the passage.
So you voted yes to, so that way you could kill it as opposed to say no?
Yes.
To then have to go through all of this again.
Because if I say it, then we're going right back for it, it's a three-three vote now.
Good, yep, yep.
So, let's move on.
Okay, Shane?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Under new business, I need the council to appoint, um, Jacob Flores to the park board.
I'd make that motion, there.
I'll, I'll second it.
Wanting to accept the mayor's appointments to the various boards and commissions, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Stierks. Any discussion?
I've only met Jacob a, a few times, but he's a super great guy.
He is, and he's very, 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 uh, good at fixing, doing, knowing, I like that. I think he'll be a good app.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tierney?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sixty-eight zero days, motion carries.
Thank you, council. Old business. I wanna thank all of you guys for staying here and for the people being so good today. Um, this has been a long, long call for us, so I just need a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve and give the bills as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Tierney, any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Tierney?
Yes.
Council President Stewart's?
Yeah.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Sixty-eight zero days, motion carries.
We have a motion for adjournment, please, go home and get up and.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Stewart's, all in favor?
Aye.